Can you do a sound check, please?
Are you asking me, Derek Gregg, or just anybody?
I was asking for Christina. Our heavenly Father, we give thanks for the opportunity to be here in this meeting to conduct the county's business. We ask that you give us guidance and help us all to make the right decision, that we're all able to conduct this business in a civil manner. Guide us and bless us. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Christina, if we could please do a roll call. Present.
This is the first one I've heard.
Okay, that puts us in a position. Last night, we received a resignation email from Kip Parker. He was a member of the planning commission. He resigned last night. So that puts our number with the previous resignation of Dave Lineal, so that puts our number at seven. Then we have total on the planning commission, so our quorum should be four. Do we have enough? We do? Okay, with one on Zoom and three of us here, so can we show that, please? Okay, and I believe you got the email from Kip, so we have documentation as to his resignation last night. Okay, so, so we'll continue with the quorum of four. All right, let's go. First thing I think I need to do, I do have some paper.
If somebody's speaking, I'm not getting anything.
Yeah, Dan, give me a second here. Hey Danny? Danny Wilcox, can you hear us?
Hey Dan, can you hear me?
Not very good.
I can hear you, Peter.
Okay, very good. I just turned my mic on the laptop on.
Yeah, well now I hear you, Peter, but I don't hear Gregg very much, and I cannot hear anything else. I didn't hear the prayer, I didn't hear the pledge.
Dan, can you hear me?
I'm not hearing Danny. The red, yellow squares around Danny Wilcox, and I don't hear you. Sorry.
Dan, I can hear all of them well. Try turning off your video, see if that helps out any.
Turning on my video?
No, sorry, Dan Mahaly.
I cannot hear anything.
Dan, can you, can you turn off your video and see whether or not you'll get a better reception on the sound?
Okay, it, I think it'd be okay, but it seems like you're using a voice-operated mic, a Vox, and unless somebody's speaking that is close enough to trip it, it goes dead quiet.
Okay, we can hear you really well, so I think we have a good connection. Danny, can you hear me? Okay?
I can hear you, and I do not hear Danny.
Have you got your mic on, Dan?
I do, but everything's on.
Okay, all right.
Dan, you can hear me though, right?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, leave your video off, and it seems to be something to do with the bandwidth that you're dealing with at the moment.
Okay.
All right, I think we can hear everybody loud and clear. Let's, uh, let's do this.
Okay, I think we can go forward with this. Try, try again. All right, where I was, was I was talking about removing the SIA from consent agenda, which I don't think that would be, I don't think we need to be reviewing that before the, we've actually had a chance to have the application. It looks like... Yeah, that's all right, just the, the SIA. Okay, now to do that, if we remove that, what I need is, I need a motion to amend the agenda. I'll make the motion to amend the agenda and take off the SIA under the consent agenda. Okay? Can you hear, you can, you can hear me?
Yes.
You can't hear Peter. Okay. All right, so if nobody heard this, what we're doing was, we're amending the agenda, we're pulling the SIA off the agenda because it, I mean, we shouldn't have it in the consent agenda when we're hearing the hearing, when we're reviewing the application tonight. So, that's the first thing to do that, we had to, requires a vote, a second, requires a motion, and a second, now we'll vote. So all in favor? All right. I, I, to Dan.
Can I ask what the motion was? Because I didn't hear it, Danny.
The motion was to remove the SIA from the consent agenda, so we had to amend the agenda. That's what the vote was for.
I'm afraid that I'm not gonna be able to, I'm not sure. I'll, I'll sign out and try to sign back in.
Try that, Dan, go ahead.
I'm, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna sign out of the meeting, and then I'm gonna try to sign back in, Danny, because it's just too choppy, I can't hear anything.
Dan, real quick, two things. Do you have a pair of headphones by chance that you can plug in? But I think what it is, is we're getting feedback from Peter's computer that's right next to you, Danny, so I, I just muted Peter, and then it works fine, but when Peter's unmuted, that's when we're not hearing well. So, I, I think, I think we should try to go ahead here with Peter's microphone muted. And Peter, we could hear you from Danny's computer. We can hear everything coming through Danny's computer, so.
Okay, I think Gregg, I think Dan just tried to sign off and sign back on.
Okay, he can also call in as well.
Sorry, folks, bear with us a minute. We gotta get him set up because we quorum includes him. Like, I gotta be sure he's, he's on there, so. Hey, Dan?
Okay, I just...
Dan, can you hear it?
I'm not getting anything.
Turn off the video.
There you go, Dan.
So, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you well. On the computer?
I'm afraid that this isn't gonna work tonight, Danny.
Do you wanna, here, you want me to switch computers with Peter? Can you hear Peter on his?
I don't hear anything.
Can you hear me now, Dan?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you perfectly.
Okay, Danny didn't answer me, he didn't hear me. It's breaking in and out. Can you, is, is this gonna work?
Peter's computer is actually worse than Danny's. I just muted Danny, but Peter, your computer is not as good as Danny's was.
Okay.
Danny, can you unmute yourself, please?
Dan, can you hear me now? Dan, are you there?
Uh, there's, most of the time, there's no sound. It's dead quiet.
I can hear both of you guys perfectly.
I don't know why I'm not getting anything from the chairman.
Can you call in to that phone number?
Oh, a cell phone. That's why, just literally having call in on your phone.
Peter, do you have that in front of you? I don't have, I can't minimize my screen when I'm recording this Zoom call here. Well, and it looks like Dan left anyhow, so. Thanks, Brandon.
Yeah, Dan, can you hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, boy, I get a bunch of echoes.
How's that?
Well, no. Well, I lost everything. It's got real thing.
Can you hear me now?
No, not good.
You can't?
No, it's...
Even on your phone? I called you. Then try Peter to call you. Hold on. Pick up the phone and Peter calls, all right, Dan? Yeah, can you, you can hear me now? Okay, we'll see what we can do. I've got you on speakerphone on my phone. Dan, I've got you on speakerphone on my phone. Think you got your computer still on?
Yeah, I'm not sure what's going on.
Okay, why don't you, why don't you turn off your computer, why don't you turn off your computer, and then just use my phone to hear what we're saying? He needs to turn off his computer volume. He needs to set up his computer volume and just talk to his phone. You can't hear me. I got full volume on this. Okay, let's see what happens here now. If you can hear us on the phone, then we can do what we need to do. Okay. Okay, we will try to proceed, see if we can make this work, because if we can't get him on the thing, then we're pretty much without a quorum, so we can't continue.
Hey Danny, I, I got...
He will when I put the phone up there for him.
I got Justin trying to call in as well, Danny.
You have Justin Clausen trying to call in?
Trying, yeah, he's trying to, so. Go ahead, Danny.
Do you have Justin?
I'm on here, can you hear me?
Hey, Justin.
Hey.
All right, Justin, are you on? All right, good. Okay, let's close down. Okay, so we have Justin now, so we got another one. All right, Justin, so you can hear us.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Okay, good. Well, we'll see how this works. See how far we can go here. All right, well, at this time, what we do normally through the, we made the amendments to the agenda, so I'll ask Christina if you have any, any information to share, any comments or thoughts?
I don't have any reports from the CC. The only thing I was gonna pull up is the other, we didn't get a lot of person on my list, and keep with the system, we're doing very hard, if you have PC, habits of you.
Okay, okay, all right.
I remember Brandon doing it.
Now, next part of the...
Did anyone hear that? Did anyone hear what Christina Stanton said? Because I sure didn't. It was echoing, echoing, echoing. Can anyone hear Christina?
Go ahead, Christina, say that again. I guess we have some people on Zoom who could not hear.
Still echoing, can't hear, still echoing.
Okay.
I got it covered. I'll, I'll take care of it.
I think we'll forego any discussion on them tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Out on Zoom, did everybody hear that? There really was nothing to discuss. Did everybody hear that? Yeah, we actually have five now. And we got one on the phone, we got one on Zoom, and three of us here. Okay, so, all right, so this part of the meeting goes into citizen comments. Now, I would ask citizen comments unrelated to any application that's, that we're hearing tonight. If, if you want to speak on something, other than what's, because you're gonna have the option to speak on the application, so is there anybody who has anything? Saying done? Okay, let's get going now. So that, over here, we'll open this hearing. The first one on the hearing is the DGA amendment, which we're all here for. So, how this goes is the planning commission, we are a quasi-judicial board, what we do, we're volunteers. What we do is we take the application at hand, we essentially compare it to the codes and ordinances that are out there, and that's what we review. We look at that part of the application. The outcome can be three things. We can recommend to approve, recommend to deny, or recommend to approve or deny, or approve with conditions. Okay, we don't have any authority in approving the application, but we can recommend it, because any option will, will go to the board. If we recommend approval, it will go. If we recommend denial, it will still be forwarded to the board. Okay, so at this point, I know we got a lot of people who want to talk tonight. I, I thank you for coming up and setting up beforehand. What I'm gonna do is, there's some folks who asked for some additional time, a little bit, and I'm, I'm okay with that. They said they'd get to about three and a half, four minutes, and if it goes over that, really, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call for recess and, and end it, and then we'll, and we'll start over. So, yeah. Pardon me?
The January 5th meeting minutes.
Oh, good. Okay, Christina, thank you. All right, let me finish this, and we'll do that before we jump into the hearing. Thank you. Okay, forgot to approve some meeting minutes. So, let me go back. Thank you for the folks coming up and asking, you know, and trying to adhere to the time limits. I appreciate that. We want to try to get finished. So, after that, after the public comment, then what we do is, then we allow the applicant and staff maybe to answer questions or rebut some things that are said, or give an opportunity to present some things that may inform people of the, you know, the stuff they've had, stuff they've requested, and at that point, we'll end that. Then we, as a planning commission, will, will ask our questions, and then we vote. Okay? That's how it goes. The applica, first, first, our staff will present the application, then we'll ask the applicant to present their part, and then we'll go into citizen comments. Okay, so, before we start that, before we start the staff presentation, what we'll do is, let's, let's go over the minutes real quick. I apologize, I did not go through those. You guys get a chance to review those meeting minutes? They're fine, okay? Okay, second. Dan, Justin, did you guys hear that? Okay, got that. We've got a motion, we've got a second on the meeting minutes from January 5th, so forego reading of them. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
I heard them all. All right, Christina, do that, let's go into the application, and this will have staff present that application. And this will have staff present that application.
Okay, this is the Spring Valley Ranch DGA amendment number three, DG two zero 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 seven three. Which is a request to approve the move into the Spring Valley Ranch Development Guide Agreement.
Hey Danny, can you stop? It, you can't hear it on Zoom. It's so echoey, it's terrible. We can hear you fine, but cannot hear who's ever talking either at the podium or somewhere.
Do you hear that, Christina? They can't hear it on Zoom?
Well, let me be clear, we can hear it, but it's like there's four of them. So-
It's really garbled?
Either somebody else's microphone is on or something, but we're getting major feedback.
Uh, let me shut my mic off. Christina, try it again, see.
Can you hear me now?
Let's, let's try it. Uh, I'll give you a thumbs up on my camera if I can, if it's better.
The property owner of Spring Valley-
It better?
Nope, no better, no better.
I've got mine off, you've got yours, so really it should be- But she's, but the people on Zoom should be hearing through her. But she's got a separate mic, I think. Daddy, I don't know. I, you might be right.
Okay.
Or you want to take this mic?
Let me see, I guess if I can just talk right at my computer and hear me Zoom. You want to try?
Say that again, fifteen.
My mic off, I'm just talking right at my computer, then they might be able to, but I don't know. I'll skip for me.
It's slightly better, but, uh, still not great by any means. It's gonna be hard to listen the entire time.
Why don't you go to Danny's-
Christina, I'm walking over from the office with my computer. I'll be there in a second.
Yeah, I wish we could go back to normal.
Can Christina, can Christina just sit at your computer, Danny, and use it?
Make sure your computer speakers are muted, are silenced. Say it again, Justin.
Uh, that one wasn't me, but I think they're just saying-
This is Jim Chaney, sorry. If, if you're having feedback, it can be coming back through, if you're using a laptop, it's feeding back through the laptop speakers, perhaps.
Set your laptop on. How come we're getting the echo? No, is that what we-
Here comes Greg, he's gonna, yeah. So, Danny, can you hear me okay? I got a couple people talking at the same time, Justin. Hold on, I can hear you. Come on up, Daddy, what, what are you saying? No, I-
See how his, his computer is set up to speakers in the Zoom, in the Zoom meeting? I can see where it's picking up the sound in the mic. But I have to look at his computer.
Yep, Danny, what's-
You're muted. Yours is on.
Mine's on, and I've tried to both mute it and off.
So what we need to figure out is what your computer is doing for, in the Zoom. So go to your Zoom controls.
Now here is mute.
Okay.
So I've got it. Now I'm, I'm open.
To, um, go to your Zoom, do you have an app? Do you have the Zoom app?
I got the Zoom app.
You want to try?
Home Zoom, so minimize that for a sec. Okay, now go to your this, go to your this.
Go to my this, Ted, that's okay. It's a what part?
And then I want you to go to, you want to go to meeting Zoom, home.
Meeting?
Let's see, I want to look at your, um-
Take a look. If you can figure it out, you're better than I am.
Okay, let me see this for a second, because I want to see where settings are.
Justin, can you hear me now?
Audio?
Yeah, that's way better, Christina.
I'm using Greg's laptop now.
Okay, we're getting you out of the speaker. Hold on just a second.
I don't need.
Yeah.
Right there, join auto by computer when joining a meeting? I thought I did that.
Use separate audio device? But that's to play ringtone, sorry.
That's to ringtone.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. But if you do that, yeah.
Then I get the echo so bad through this.
I know, you're gonna get the, see, the problem is you can't have more than one Zoom open.
I don't work out some echo. Some people are saying they can hear?
Yeah.
But, so you're not getting sound out, which none of us can hear anything from your computers.
Can you guys hear me in here, though?
I can sort of hear you.
This is only going out of Zoom.
Yeah, but I think they can't hear if his, if it's, it's coming in. So his internal mic is what they're using, it's not hearing.
Justin says he can hear me when I'm on Greg's laptop.
Is you're the-
Ready at least here now to go forward.
Are you not muted on yours?
Come on.
I need to- Danny.
Make it quick. So now, what did you say, Christina? Can Justin hear?
He can hear me on, on Greg's laptop.
On Greg's laptop. Okay, there you go.
Are you gonna fix me?
Yeah, I'll get you back.
Get me back to where I was. Daddy, I'll be all screwed up.
Didn't do that right, sorry.
Oh, there we go, hit that little, I know how to get there. There you go. Good, thank you.
Okay.
But Justin, can you hear us now?
I can hear you, and I can also hear somebody doing their dishes.
Okay, good. We will try to continue.
All right, so data and timeline for this application. Again, property owner is Spring Valley Land Investments LLC, and applicant is Jim-
Christina, you're gonna have to talk, because I-
Okay.
Stare.
Can you hear me still on Zoom?
I can hear you.
Okay.
So, yeah, property owner is Spring Valley Land Investments LLC, applicant is Jim Marshall, properties approximately two hundred and forty-five acres. Uh, committee meeting was held on October twenty-second, twenty twenty. Application's date was, uh, November ninth, twenty twenty. And then we're on referrals for the application from November sixteenth through December seventh. Uh, originally the planning commission was being scheduled for, uh, January fifth, but some other notices needed to be taken care of, so it was continued to tonight, January nineteenth. It was originally scheduled for the January twenty-seventh for county commissioner meeting, uh, but due to the notice issues that were addressed, that will be pushed out to February tenth for V O T C. Um, the public hearing was mailed originally to property owners on December eighteenth, twenty twenty, within quarter mile. Uh, and hosted on seventh property on December ninth, twenty twenty. And, um, it was in the Elbert County News on December seventeenth, twenty twenty. The additional notices that had to go out went out on January fifth. Uh, mailed, and letters here, this affidavit, and this envelope letter that went out to the other properties, this was on the Douglas County side. This zoning map shows the project's area boundaries, um, and shows along the surrounding properties, zoning, uh, one of its agricultural, but you can see some smaller residential that are, um, A R, R A, uh, and some other, uh, I think it was A two's in here, uh, and some other P's in the area as well. This is the aerial map for the projects, and it's a little busy because I have the subdivision layers turned on, so you can see labeling for different subdivision names. But you can see that there's, uh, Thunder Hill, Deer Creek, Prairie Trail, you know, Pearson's Ranch, a whole bunch of other subdivisions there in that vicinity. The application, like I said, was sent to referral agencies per the Elbert County regulations. Responding referral agencies, Elbert County, Elbow Hill, had no objections. Elbert County Building Department had no objections, but did include a note, which is part of the package. Um, Elbert County Assessor's Office had no objections. The, uh, US Fish Law Lab Services had no concerns. Philip sixty-six company had no objections. Uh, Colorado Geological Survey had no objections. I R A had no comments. And Elizabeth Card Production Services had no objections. Uh, proposed amendment three, uh, kind of highlight some of the changes in here. This is a stat record. Section three point five, change language clarify basis of developments and allow developer to post sufficient financial security in the form of a bond or performance guarantee to ensure completeness of the base as required by section six point one zero, here, uh, section six point two point two, deleted in its entirety, that was county road seventeen twenty-one. Section six point two point three, deleted in its entirety, refers to, uh, county road one eighty-six. Section six point two point four, change the issuance of any residential building permits within playing area M to prior to the issuance of the seventh residential building permit within playing area M. Uh, section six point two point five, deleted in its entirety, referencing county road seventeen. Section six point two point six, changed up to county road one seventy-four in conjunction with the issuance of any residential building permits for playing area M to north of county road one seventy-four prior to the issuance of the seventh residential building permit for playing area M. Section six point two point seven, changed county road one eighty-two to county road one seventy-eight and changed in conjunction with the issuance of any residential building permits for playing area M to in conjunction prior to the issuance of the seventh residential building permit for planning area M. Added all right-of-way drainage temporary and permanent easements necessary to construct and maintain county road one seventy-eight have been acquired through deed or dedication to Elbert County. Six point two point eight, deleted in its entirety, was referenced to county road one eighty-two. Section six point two point nine, changed north of county road one eighty-two in conjunction with the issuance of any residential building permits for playing area M to north the northern boundary of Spring Valley Ranch, playing area M, all the way up here and connecting to county road one seventy-eight prior to the issuance of the seventh residential building permit for playing area M. So those are the, the major changes from the previous, uh, agreements to what is being proposed. And staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend to the V O T C approval of DG twenty zero zero seven three, subject to new conditions one through two here. One, the applicant will be required to sign within seven days of a decision by the Warner County Commissioners. Two, recordation of all appropriate documentation to occur within a hundred and eighty days of the Warner County Commissioners' approval. Thank you.
Hey Greg.
Hey guys. Zoom, can you please mute yourself?
Yeah, I think, are, are there people on phone, on the phone as well, Greg? This is Justin.
Yes, please, anybody out there, go ahead and mute yourself, please. And Spring Valley Vistas have changed dramatically since the approval of the second amendment to the Spring Valley Ranch Development Guide Agreement in two thousand and six. We're referencing Spring Valley Ranch, Spring Valley Vistas, and the third amendment to the Spring Valley Ranch Development Guide Agreement, which is a presentation. This is, this is- I want to start with just a little bit of background, the, uh, we've got the slide up here, which, uh, infinity map for the Spring Valley Ranch Committee, National Committee. Spring Valley Ranch is two thousand two hundred and thousand seven hundred and eighty-six, and, uh, it sits on, uh, it sits approximately two thousand two-
Hey guys, hey guys, lots of feedback. We can't hear a thing on Zoom. It's, there's a lot of feedback. Anyone hear? Hey, we can't hear a thing. Hello? We can't hear anything he's saying. It's echoing. Stop talking. We cannot hear. It's echoing. Please, address those issues.
Van, Van, your iPad is unmuted. If you're banned, please mute your iPad. Van, you're still unmuted.
I know. Shut up.
Whatever.
Can Justin hear?
Give it a try.
Justin, can you hear?
I, I can hear. Go ahead and give it a try, but now I can hear myself talking in your computer.
Okay. I'll mute, I'll try to mute my-
Yes. Can you turn around? Can you guys hear if you turn around?
I can hear.
You guys mute the slides for me at least?
Yeah, we can do that.
You need, do you need this? Don't mute the slides.
You'll have to speak up so they can't use the microphone? I guess not.
Dan, we can hear you.
Look, it was working with Christina was using the microphone.
I don't use anybody else.
Okay, it was coming from my computer.
Okay.
What's doing at the podium?
Modern technology. Modern technology. Okay, so this, this is a- I know, it's a little thing, yeah. So can Justin hear me now?
Justin? Can you hear?
I can hear him, but I hear you, Danny, more than him.
Okay. Try it again, Tim.
No.
Original DGA application was currently approved by the Elbert County Warner County Commissioners in February eighteen, two thousand eighteen. Decision by the Elbert County District Court in July twenty twenty- Decision by the Albert County District Court in July twenty twenty.
No. Danny, I can't hear him.
Can Justin hear me?
No.
Okay, try it, do it one more time, let me.
Justin, can you hear me? Is Danny still on?
It's through my computer.
This is the way they can hear us through your computer?
Hold on, hold on, Danny, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you good.
Okay. Your computer sounds wonderful. Can Jim Marshall come up?
Stand behind you and talk back there and maybe he can hear me.
I was just going to take my computer over to Jim.
Yeah.
Here, we'll do that. See if that works. Does Justin can you hear?
I can hear you, go for it.
Okay. I'm going to start over. Purpose of this public hearing is to present and consider the reapproval of the third amendment to the Spring Valley Ranch Development Guide Agreement. The proposal amends specific sections and obligations contained in the Spring Valley Ranch Development Guide to conform with current market and project conditions. The amendment process does not involve the design or approval process for any actual improvements. The process of amending contracts and agreements occurs routinely to accommodate changes in conditions and circumstances that didn't exist at the time the contracted agreement was originated. Circumstances surrounding Spring Valley Ranch and Spring Valley vistas have changed dramatically since the approval of the second amendment to the Spring Valley Ranch Development Guide Agreement in two thousand and six. I'll be referencing Spring Valley Ranch, Spring Valley vistas and the third amendment to the Spring Valley Ranch Development Guide Agreement. Throughout my presentation, for simplicity purposes, I'll refer to them as SBR, the vistas and DGA three respectively. The original DGA three application was heard and approved by Albert County Board of County Commissioners on February fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. A decision by the Albert County District Court in July of two thousand and twenty required the DGA application to be renoticed and reheard. It was the opinion of the court that Albert County's notice provisions that were in effect at the time DGA three was originally approved in two thousand and eighteen did not provide adequate public notice for the planning commission and the board of county commissioner public hearings. The court did not object to the content of the approved amendment. Spring Valley Ranch is a one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six unit master planned golf course community on approximately twenty-two hundred acres. It's located north of Singing Hills Road and south of the proposed CR one seventy-eight alignment and much east and west of County Road seventeen twenty-one to County Road thirteen on its western boundary. Large master planned communities such as Spring Valley Ranch are developed in several phases and take many years to complete. As a result of development in the off-site road network, water and wastewater systems are also developed in phases as impacts warrant. Constructing, constructing infrastructure before it's needed is not only cost prohibitive but unwise. As improvements that are not used deteriorate much faster than infrastructure that is being utilized. SVR was really originally approved in two thousand and one. The development guide agreement was amended in two thousand and four, two thousand and six and as stated previously in two thousand and eighteen. Phase one construction of SVR started in late two thousand and four. New home sales began in two thousand and six. No new lots were developed from two thousand and eight to two thousand and sixteen due to the severe economic collapse that began in late two thousand and seven. The intersection upgrades to County Road seventeen twenty-one and Singing Hills Road in initial two miles of County Road seventy-one, seventeen twenty-one north to County Road one seventy-four that are required in the SVR, SVR DGA were constructed with phase one Spring Valley Ranch improvements. Spring Valley Ranch Metropolitan District number one provides central water and central service service to the Spring Valley Golf Course and all residential and commercial lots within the community. SVR draws its water from the lower Dawson, Denver, Arapahoe and Laramie-Fox Hill aquifers. SVR is precluded from using water in the upper Dawson aquifer. The upper Dawson formation is used by most residential lots of two and a half acres or larger in Albert County. All SVR water was quantified and adjudicated in Division one Water Court and meets the county's three hundred year aquifer life requirement. All SVR wells are between fifteen hundred and two thousand feet deep and cost roughly one million dollars per well to drill and complete. SVR currently has six wells. The district began working on the implementation of SVR's water reuse system in two thousand and eighteen. The filing six final plat, which was submitted roughly eighteen months ago, is designed with a purple pipe required to deliver reused water for outdoor irrigation purposes to two hundred and forty-seven residential lots. SVR plans to deliver reused water to the Spring Valley Golf Course and to the future residential neighborhoods. Phase one for SVR filing one was constructed over fifteen years ago. Most of SVR's roads are in good condition considering their age. Over the past several months, we've been working to catalog all areas that need maintenance or repair. Although some maintenance work was complete in the summer of two thousand and eighteen, we are implementing the initial phase of an extensive road maintenance program this calendar year. We will address the areas that are in obvious need of attention first. Several local roads have been constructed in the past three to five years within the community and are in very good shape. Christina, can you flip to the next slide, please? Spring Valley vistas was approved in January of two thousand and seven. The PUD was approved for three thousand residential units, multiple school sites, a commercial retail business park, a fire station, a recreation center in several park areas. The vista's traffic impact assessment dated August thirtieth, two thousand and six and updated on February twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven projected that the vistas would generate over thirty-two thousand new traffic trips per day until then. The development of the vista's project did not move forward as a result of the severe economic downturn that started in late two thousand and seven. Approvals for Spring Valley vistas have lapsed. The land parcels that comprised the vista's project have been acquired by unrelated third-party landlords. It's expected that the buildout of the former vista's land will be predominantly thirty-five acre lot. The second amendment to the SVR DGA and the PVA application for SDV were being processed concurrently by the county in two thousand and six. The population of northwestern Albert County has doubled over the past three decades. Not one new road has been constructed. Next slide, please. This is, this graphic here is an aerial view and I put on several of the larger communities that that are in the northwestern part of Albert County. But this is the twenty-one twenty, twenty twenty-one road exhibit for the roads that we're proposing that we will still build. You'll notice that County Road, I don't know how well people can see it. County Road one seventy-eight is three miles. County Road thirteen is two miles heading north from Deer Creek Ranch up to County Road one seventy-eight. County Road one seventy-four from County Road twenty-one over to County Road thirteen. Obviously, one seventy-eight goes from County Road thirteen to the top of the range. The SVR updated traffic impact analysis dated April twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty studied current twenty twenty-five and twenty forty traffic conditions. It recommends that the developer should underconstruct a paved two-lane roadway along the CR one seventy-eight alignment between Delbert Road and County Road thirteen. And two point one four miles of, and two four point one four miles of County Road thirteen, south of County Road's one seventy-eight. The analysis also recommends acceleration, deceleration, turn lanes and traffic control improvements at the intersection of County Road one seventy-eight and Delbert Road. All additional right-of-way and construction easements for the construction of the County Road thirteen, one seventy-four and one seventy-eight alignment are required from private property, all of which support the construction of the new road alignment. There is no right-of-way for County Road one eighty-two. The recorded final plat for Delbert Hills dedicated, Albert Hills is located just north of Meadow Station. It's where you see the jog in the road on County Road one seventy-eight. The, the recorded final plat for Delbert Hills dedicated to Albert County, the western half mile of County Road one seventy-eight right away. Although the developer proposes to begin the construction of County Roads thirteen, one seventy-four and one seventy-eight with the initial phase of Spring Valley filing five, the LSC traffic analysis mentioned above states that the improvements are not needed until approximately two hundred and eighty-fifth certificate of occupancy in filing five. Filing five plat is approved, but not yet developed. The updated Spring Valley Ranch traffic study was prepared by LSC Transportation Consultants and was reviewed by Albert County's independent third-party consultant, Kimberly Horn. Kimberly Horn concurred with LSC's recommendation. County Roads thirteen, one seventy-four and one seventy-eight are all public roads and provide public access for thousands of residents in northwestern Albert County. The thirteen, one seventy-eight, four and one seventy-eight public road alignment will create a much-needed directional east west, east west road connection in northwestern Albert County. By directional, I mean you don't have to go south to go north or east to go west, as is the case currently. The alignment will divert and disperse current and future traffic from Spring Valley, Deer Creek and Vista Ridge areas away from Singing Hills Road, Delbert Road, south of County Road one seventy-eight, County Road one eighty-six, east of Delbert Road and even some traffic by the county law. The new road alignment will reduce drive times from Spring to Spring Valley, Deer Creek area by five to ten minutes when, when heading northwest. Albert County has no desire to build or maintain roads that are not needed. The off-site road obligations contained in the original DGA back in two thousand and one and subsequently amended in DGA two total fifteen point five miles of new paved roads and a two hundred and twenty thousand cash dollar cash contribution to the one point one four miles of County Road north from Deer Creek Ranch to County Road one seventy-four. And again, I don't know how well everybody can see this stuff, but got to basically that green line, if you can see the green line where one seventy-four cuts across to Vista Ridge subdivision, the one point four one miles is south of, of County Road, County Road one seventy-four. It should be noted that until July of two thousand and twenty, the approved and recorded DGA three was valid and binding document and that all actions required right-of-way acquisition, road design, drainage studies, traffic studies, construction plans and all subsequent reviews and approvals were based on roadway amendments contained in the two thousand and eighteen recorded version of DGA three. The court requested the DGA three be noticed. It did not object to the content of the amendment. Next slide, please. This is a summary. Christine kind of hit the high points. There's a couple of other things that we're actually amending here. We start with the deletion of section five point two two, which is redundant with section four. The overall density remains at one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six lots. We're not changing the density. What we are asking to delete section five point two two is that it basically states the same thing and same, same information as section four. Reasserting the commitment to water conservation in section six point six, which is our reuse system. And the third thing is we're memorializing the obligation to fund the Albert County Growth Impact Fee of two thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars per lot, which is a voluntary increase from what we were approved for back in the beginning of the project in an economic development fee, which is a new fee that the county had asked us to, to pay for all remaining residential permits within the Spring Valley Ranch community. This is being added to the DGA, it's not in there right now. The, we have been paying the twenty-four fifty-three and the three hundred and fifty dollars per lot since the DGA was approved back in February of two thousand and eighteen. An all-new lot that had been, we're building permits have been built. So the county has been receiving those fees since early in two thousand and fifteen. The fourth thing is we're modifying the phasing language to clarify conditions. Christina did mention this, that was the, the item where we agreed that in order to develop multiple phases, as long as the SAAs are recorded and the surety acceptable to the Albert County is posted, that we could develop multiple phases. And then the last item is the redefining of the road obligations, which I'll get into in more detail here. The requested amendment to section six point two involves the deletion, which is the roadway section of the DGA, involves the deletion of ten point five miles of off-site roads that were needed to serve the combined traffic impacts generated by four thousand seven hundred and eighty-six residential units and ancillary uses for the SVR and Spring Valley Vista's project. We are including three miles of new roads, off-site roads, which is County Road one seventy-eight and we're amending the language that currently exists on the southern one point one four miles of County Road thirteen. Our obligation on that road was to contribute two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Can we go to the next area? It's Christine, thanks. What we have here, this is a little more detailed map. Everything that is outlined in red and has the hash marks through it, that is the land that was Spring Valley Ranch. This project was approved in January of two thousand and seven. Now there's a resolution that was signed by the three county commissioners at the time. And we do have a traffic study that was completed, well, it was originally the, it was originally completed in two thousand and six, it was updated in early two thousand and seven. It specifically identified County Roads one eighty-two and the extension of County Road thirteen as obligations that were required for Spring Valley Vista's. You'll notice County Road one eighty-two is just south of Snuggly Hill Ranches, Cottonwood Hills, Mountain View Estates. It, it was designed to go over to County twenty-one at the time. And it, it does go through the northern part of Spring Valley Vista's. If it was, it was, if it was intended just for the sole use of Spring Valley Ranch, we never would have gotten that last mile. The request, the requested amendment, sorry, the one, the four point one four miles of new obligations in conjunction with the two miles constructed at the beginning of the project in phase one of County Road seventeen twenty-one. The one mile of County Road thirteen that, and the two miles of County Road one seventy-four that remain unchanged from the existing DGA are necessary to serve the build-out traffic impacts generated by Spring Valley Ranch. DGA three takes the total off-site road construction for Spring Valley Ranch to nine point one four miles with only one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six residential units. That's a decrease of three thousand residential units plus all the ancillary uses that were included in Spring Valley Vista's. The bottom line is SVR will build nine point one four miles of off-site roads, which translates to fifty-eight percent of the two thousand and six road obligations to serve only thirty-seven percent of the residential impacts that were approved between Spring Valley Ranch and Spring Valley Vista's. So we're getting fifty-eight percent of the roads for thirty-seven percent of the impacts. As I stated earlier, the ten point five miles to delete or the one mile of County Road thirteen north from one seventy-eight to one eighty-two. So it's that, that green section above the highlighted area and the second, five miles of County Road one eighty-two. So those five miles here, this one mile here are both being requested to be deleted. One mile of County Road one eighty-six, which is on the northern, let me get this thing to work, right? This one mile up here that connects in with the existing paved section of one eighty-six. And three miles of County Road twenty-one, County Road one seventy-four, which is right here, all the way up to here. And then point five miles of County Road seventeen, which is right here, right? I gotta use my right hand. So that, that's right here, that's about half a mile. The total is ten point five miles, as I mentioned. The we're, we're out, and I'm going to get back to my phone here. The three miles to be added are one seventy-eight, eastern County Road thirteen, which is the, goes back to the previous slide that I showed. And one mile of County Road thirteen north from County Road one seventy-four to one seventy-eight. The two miles of County Road one seventy-four, which are still, still intact. And the, and the one point one three miles that we talked about. The twenty twenty-one has cost to construct the one point four miles of County Road thirteen, which is currently Albert County's obligation. You can see there that we have identified that we have a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar cash contribution to that portion of County Road thirteen currently. And that, that goes back to the original Development Guide Agreement in two thousand and one. The, the estimated cost for that road today is one million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's an estimate based on actual bids that we got recently for that portion of the road. We're only responsible for two hundred and twenty thousand of that currently. The county's portion of that is one million two hundred The county's portion of that is $1,230,000 under the current obligations. The county contribution would obviously be funded through tax dollars, which ultimately comes from taxpayers. We're proposing that that obligation to Albert County be waived. As documented on page 20 of the August 30, 2006 Traffic Impact Assessment for Spring Valley Vista's, the two-mile extension of County Road thirteen and five miles of County Road one eighty-two were contemplated to supplement existing county roads over time and were warranted specifically as a result of the 3,000-unit Spring Valley Vista's project. With the elimination of Spring Valley Vista's, six miles of off-site roads are no longer warranted. The obligation to improve County Road one eighty-two and County Road thirteen, as described above, were included in the 2006 Second Amendment to the Spring Valley Ranch Development Act Amendment. As both SVR and Spring Valley Vista's projects were owned by the same legal entity, and were being funded and developed by the same company. The deletion of the non-directional three-mile County Road twenty-one and one mile of County Road one eighty-six access, which is the green lines that run north from County Road one seventy-four and up to County Road one eighty-six there, are total four miles. This was approved in 2001 with the County Road one seventy-four thirteen. The result of the County Road one seventy-four thirteen and one seventy-eight alignment creates a more efficient road alignment and diverts traffic from the existing paved portions of County Road eighty-six on the south side of Elkhorn Ranch and Amanda Pines, and the north side of Smoky Hill Ranches, Cottonwood Hills, and Mountain View Estates. The more efficient and directional County Road one seventy-four thirteen, one seventy-eight alignment replaces the five miles of CR one eighty-two and the northern one mile of As previously stated, the need to construct the deleted offset road obligations related to County Roads thirteen, seventeen, seventeen twenty-one, one eighty-two, and one eighty-six no longer are needed. There's approximately 10 sections of undeveloped ranchland that butt these existing dirt or undeveloped road sections, with currently no need for Albert County tax dollars to be used to build any of these deleted roads. As has been the case in the past 30 years, Albert County will not pave or develop any unnecessary new roads. Future development will, and if and when it occurs, Albert County will continue to spend its available dollars to maintain existing road infrastructure. The estimated construction cost based on actual bids for one seventy-four thirteen, one seventy-eight exceeds $11 million. No Albert County tax dollars will be used to fund these improvements. The funding is in place to complete the proposed road construction. At this point, I'd like to bring up Chris McGrane again. He's my traffic engineer with LSC Transportation. I'd like Chris just to talk for a couple of minutes about the traffic study that was completed in April of this past year, and it's a study that warrants the, it's a study that warrants the construction of one seventy-eight and the roads that we're suggesting that we should report to the state.
Thanks, Jim. Chris McGrane, LSC Transportation Consultants. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Colorado, and I'm a professional traffic operations engineer with a national certification. LSC's been doing work in the metro area since the mid-'70s, and I've been involved in our Denver office or our Colorado Springs office since the early 2000s. Our firm frequently does roughly about 100 traffic studies per year. We do a few in Albert County here and there. Basically, our traffic studies involve several components that we piece together to give us a snapshot of what the future conditions might look like and how to determine what the potential mitigation might be to mitigate traffic impacts. So first thing we started with is traffic counts. So we did a large number of traffic counts. We also looked at other developments in the area that have, are in different various stages of approvals, independence being one, obviously Spring Valley Ranch is another. We looked at growth rates in the county excluding those properties, so just what the natural growth rate might be without any of these big developments. And then we looked at all those traffic added together, and we come up with an impact. And our task as the traffic engineer was to let Jim know, now that he has 1,700 and something units rather than 4,700, what do we need to mitigate these impacts? And that's where we started developing this alternative with CR one seventy-eight. And so that traffic study was submitted, reviewed, we got feedback, and ultimately that was accepted and used as the basis for taking this alignment to the next level. So that's pretty much my role in the project. Jim, just wanted me to get up here and tell you kind of the backstory of what we did and how we got to where we're at.
Obviously, Chris will be available answering questions to any of the questions. But Christina, can you go to the next slide? So I want to summarize some benefits, financial benefits to the county of Albert. Number one, we're relieving them of $1,230,000 on the southern 1.14 miles of County Road thirteen. The increased growth and economic development fee represents approximately $1,900,000 of new money. That's based on about 1,300 new homes left to build in Spring Valley. Every time a building permit is pulled, there's permit fees, there's use taxes on the estimated construction cost of the house. We're estimating on 1,300 homes that it's roughly $3,000 a house, that's another 3.9 million. So we've got total one-time revenue sources of $7,300,000 based on those numbers. And then that build-out, based on Albert County's current certified mill of, you have 28 mills roughly, on the total 1,786 homes, with an average home price of $450,000 as a zero list there, will generate about $1.6 million a year to the county in perpetual annual tax revenue. With that, I don't really have much more to add at this point. Certainly be available for questions, and we'll probably have a few comments after the public testimony. Does anybody have any questions? I know there's a lot of information here. Again, we're here tonight to contemplate amending the obligations, the off-site obligations on roads and a couple of other things. We're not here to, you know, we're not here discussing design or any of that stuff.
What I'll do, what I'll do is I'll get public comment, and I'll, each person comes up and comments or questions of whatever they can say, we'll make notes of it, and then after we get all that completed, then we'll kind of go back and ask if we regret some of the things that came up in those comment sections, so that way we can kind of keep it.
That sounds fine, and obviously we'll be taking those too.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you could.
Thanks.
I wonder if any of you can turn around there?
Probably can do it.
Yeah. See, I did the only part I can do. All right. So to start tonight, what we'll do, we'll start with public comment, we'll take the public comment from the folks who are here, all right? There was a sign-in list, I don't know if everybody got a chance to sign in, and I'll just write down the list, obviously, if you could please, I'm trying to keep it to three minutes, I've allowed some people to go over. I, they came up and asked to about, to kind of the max of four minutes. So what we'll do is present your name, your address, that will not be accounted for in your time presented, okay? And then go with your comments, okay? So we'll write down the list. First one, first one, Candace Dilla.
Can I just make sure that the people on the, can hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, go for it.
Okay, great, thanks. Candace Peddila, and I'm at 446 Meadow Station Circle. Yep. Albert County zoning regulations specify that they are designed to promote the health, safety, and welfare of present and future inhabitants of Albert County. Statutorily, welfare is defined as promoting both physical and material well-being. This proposal does not promote the safety and welfare of Albert County citizens as it shifts tax burdens that are currently and contractually on the developer onto taxpayers. In addition, this proposal violates and/or inadequately addresses at least five Albert County zoning regulations, which we've provided in an attached document for your convenience in your folders, or in, Christina, I think, has emailed in the chat box if you're on Zoom. This proposal fails most egregiously in terms of Article 7 F1, as it does not conform to and is generally inconsistent with the goals and policies of the Albert County Comprehensive Plan, which states that maintenance and infrastructure improvements are not currently keeping pace with the county's increasing traffic demands, and new residential development should cover all costs of on and off-site roads. It also fails in terms of Article 7 F6, since the proposal will in fact be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the present or future inhabitants of Albert County. An amendment means a change, and to know whether or not this change enhances the safety and welfare of Albert County citizens is consistent with the goals and policies of the Albert County Comprehensive Plan, and thus deserves your approval, requires understanding the current agreements in place. This developer is asking you to change three things in his current contract with the county. The roads he's obligated to build or pave, the dual reuse water irrigation system he is currently under contract to build, and the development impact fees. In 2002, Albert County agreed to let this developer build 678 homes in return for, and I'm sorry you people on the Zoom can't see this, but we're showing it on a map that Mr. Marshall himself presented at the concept meeting. In return for 678 homes, he was building north-south roads from Singing Hills to County Line Road. And very specifically, County Road seventeen twenty-one, it says in his contract, shall be constructed in conformance with county regulations in cooperation with Albert County from County Road one seventy-four north to County Road one eighty-six prior to the issuance of the 400th residential building permit within Spring Valley Ranch. On October 22nd, 2020, the developer stated in a community meeting that he had built 443 homes. The developer has failed to meet that contractual obligation, so there must be a higher level of scrutiny by county officials since his new proposal seeks to further reduce his obligations. In 2006, the Albert County Board of County Commissioners made a very simple trade: seven miles of road for 600 more home permits. And nothing in either the resolution or the final DGA two mentions the Spring Valley Vista subdivision, as Mr. Marshall tries to assert in his application.
Thank you. So I'm Lane Peddila, 446 Meadow Station. So if you look closely at, Lane Peddila.
Lane.
Yep. So if you look closely at County Road one seventy-eight, the developer wants to substitute for County Road one eighty-two, traveling one mile up County Road thirteen to one eighty-two for three miles, and then straight across to East Parker Road. As the developer is currently contracted to build, it's no difference for commuters than traveling three miles down County Road one seventy-eight, one mile up Delbert Road, and turning left onto East Parker Road, except in terms of traffic and safety concerns, which we are going to tell later here. This proposal substitutes the thirteen and a half miles of road that the developer is currently obligated to build or pave for only seven miles, and thus shifts at least $6.5 million of road construction back to Albert County citizens. There is absolutely no difference, no evidence of advantage, and in the presentations tonight, you'll see some real disadvantages in building one seventy-eight, as opposed to currently contracted obligated one eighty-two. If contrary to the Albert County Comprehensive Plan, county officials can cite reasons that the east-west roads are not currently needed and should therefore be funded by future development, then Albert County can simply enforce its current contracts with this developer in terms of the original north-south road set out 20 years ago and currently under contract that provide another avenue for fire protection, outlets to E470, Southlands Mall, shopping, and the airport. The proposal before you tonight is in contravention of zoning regulation Article 7 F1, F5, and F6, as well as Article 8 E1 and F5. Based on the Albert County zoning regulations cited, this amendment fails to respect roads. In terms of the water system, on August 30th, 2004, the First Amendment to SVR DGA, the developer was given permission to build an additional 508 homes, called a density bonus. And the contract states that the developer has agreed to install a dual reuse water irrigation system to each residential lot. Those systems have not been installed. Again, Albert County has failed to enforce its existing contract with this developer. Recently, Mr. Marshall met with homeowners in the SVR development and promised once again that he will build this system and that he's committed to this water reuse system. Many believe him and are here tonight in support of this. As county officials, we have a duty to remember that this developer is in default on a current contract with Albert County as we speak. The proposal before you states only that Spring Valley Ranch Metropolitan District Number One is committed to implement water conservation measures, including the use of reclaimed water for outdoor irrigation purposes. This language does not provide a contractual basis for the promises Mr. Marshall has given the SVR residents. Thus, again citing Article 7 F6, this proposal fails to protect the material well-being of those being promised orally, but not by a contractual agreement. To install the dual reuse water irrigation system originally and legally obligated to Mr. Marshall's current contract with Albert County, and it's up to you to protect these citizens for your zoning regulations.
Thank you. My name is Stephen W. Peddila at 446 Meadow Station Circle. I guess finally what I want to say, finally, the impact fees, that's where we're gonna, county's gonna receive all this money from Mr. Marshall. Impact fees are determined by Colorado State statute based on projects and services planned or underway. Albert County Commissioners pay $56,000 to carefully study what fees the county is allowed by statute to assess. Albert County zoning regulations, Article 1-1.3(c) states, regarding all fees set by Albert County, impact fees and all fees will be set at a level to recover costs incurred by the county to accommodate development. I want to interject one thing here. Mr. Marshall's fees are tied back to 2006. 2006 was a long time ago, things have changed. He'd like those 2006 fees memorialized. They're probably about half of what they should be. In order to set impact fees, he said he must be undertaking to determine the legality of appropriate fees based in Albert County, current impact fees for homes. This has not been done at this point in time. Thus, the proposal fails to provide evidence of a basis for its impact fees based on a study that would determine a level to recover costs to be incurred by the county in this development. If Marshall, if Mr. Marshall wants to abide by the current contract regarding impact fees, then that may be permissible. However, there is no legal basis to justify the fees he's asking to be memorialized in the current proposal. This agreement must be rejected because there is no legal factual basis on which it can be accepted. It disadvantages Albert County taxpayers and citizens in every asset and violates county zoning regulations as a result. We ask that you reject the Spring Valley DGA Amendment 3, DG 200073, an amendment to the Spring Valley Ranch Development Guide pursuant to Albert County zoning regulations. I'd like to step over here for a second to show you. You saw this number that was pretty popular, people from Mr. Marshall had put on one of his slides. It was 2803, which is the 2553 plus the 350. Okay. So Mr. Marshall, he said here, Mr. Marshall said he had roughly 1,300 homes. He put 1,400 on here. That's about $3.9 million. Now, the county has just done this study, and they should be between five points of, he should end up with the new study between eight million and 10 million. So it's about less than half of what he would like to pay. Thank you.
Good evening, volunteer planning commissioners. My name is Patty McKernan, and I live at 97 Meadow Station Road in District 2. I've lived in Albert County for over 18 years and moved here after 9/11 seeking a peaceful, safe, and rural life. I've often joked that there's traffic today when I had to wait for one or two cars before turning on or off of Delbert Road. That is no longer a joke as more and more land has been approved for high-density housing, which is why we are here today. Spring Valley Ranch was approved prior to my arrival, and even when I took my children out for golf lessons, I didn't see very many houses. I really wasn't aware of the growth or the name Jim Marshall until the debacle of Spring Valley Vista's in 2006 and '07. Little did I know that citizens had to become experts in water, traffic, and land use in order to survive in this county. Fast forward to today and the application to build CR 178 in Spring Valley's DGA 3. There are many points of contention, but I'll talk about three. Number one, Jim Marshall's already breached his contract with Albert County. Number two, the roads contracted by Marshall in DGA 1 were not built before the 400th permit, and the county did nothing to enforce the contract. And number three, the Cora records show that there were concerns with the selection of 178 and a lack of analysis comparing the original plan 182 from the 2008 Transportation Master Plan, which by the way Judge Holmes' 2009 Colorado Supreme Court decision confirmed is binding, not advisory. Therefore, in front of you today is a packet that includes the sign-off of DGA 3 for Spring Valley Ranch. You are being asked to check the boxes tonight. Paid county employees have checked the boxes, giving their consent to this amendment. The question is, did they do their homework? I have strong doubts, but I do look to you to do yours. Let me quote from an email from Chris Martin, the Douglas County Traffic Engineer, who reviewed the 178 traffic impact analysis in August of 2018. Quote, "As the network depicts rejected alternatives, we would ask who made the selection/rejection decisions and what was the criteria for determining which routes would be rejected?" End quote. And, quote, "What does Albert County see as the benefits of this connection to Delbert Road over the connection to Delbert Road via the 182 alignment shown in your current transportation master plan?" End quote. There are no recorded answers to these questions. Ladies and gentlemen, although it's all gentlemen tonight, so gentlemen, this is the question in front of you today: who made the selection? The answer is Jim Marshall. Is Marshall a citizen of Albert County? Nope. Marshall is the repeated subject of litigation and anger and is the party who is negotiating with himself because the commissioners are rubber stamping and not holding into his contract with the citizens of Albert County. Not only does Marshall seem to have a hold here, but it appears he has sway over Douglas County as well. For my previous quote, Doug Coe had serious concerns over the choice, yet received no responses to their inquiry. Rory Hale even berated Christina Stanton for baselines dropping the ball again. Last February, Marshall reached out to Matt Williams, the Doug Coe Assistant Director of Public Works Engineering, and mentioned a meeting they had held a few weeks ago. Within 90 minutes of that email, Doug Coe no longer had objections to the selection of 178 over 182. The simple fact is that the benefit of selecting 178 is a million dollars in Jim Marshall's pocket, but will be a giant liability for the Albert County taxpayers. You have the ability to demand safety and a financial benefit review of this proposal, and I urge you to do so and reject this proposal. Thank you.
Yep, that's me. Is this the one word? Tom Redman, I live in 24 Meadow Station Road. So I'm kind of new to this whole thing with Spring Valley Ranch, but when I saw what was happening, I just, I couldn't keep quiet. The roads deleted in this proposal provided three ways for 1,786 families to exit from the development to around to the surrounding communities. They represent a 20% increase in the homes in this county and probably the same number increase in the traffic. The deleted roads and the water reuse system, as you've heard, should already have been built. These families should be using them today, and they're not. The developers spent the time on a smaller road, a shorter road, instead of building those. And again, we're at the point where they should be available and people using them. There's no contract letter that I've seen relieving him the obligation. The developer's entire justification for this amendment is that the roads are no longer needed. The county doesn't want them. Yet, there's no change in the homes in this DGA. There's no change in the traffic. I've looked at the analyses through Spring Valley Ranch up through the current DGA 3. There's no change in the number of vehicles per day. The houses are the same. Everything that is supposed to be contained in the agreement is supposed to be in the contract. There's nothing else implied or external, yet there is no mention at all of Spring Valley Vista. Maybe there's something I haven't seen. Maybe there's something missing, but there's nothing that talks about anything other than the homes for Spring Valley Ranch. If the county has some good documented reason why they want to eliminate that, well, it'd be nice if we could see that. 178 is a road to nowhere. There's no traffic analysis showing CR 178 is safer or better in replacing those three avenues I mentioned. If there were, it would be in here. The opposite is actually true. The roads currently on contract up through DGA 2 accommodate 1,786 families, which amount to 18,000 to 17,000 vehicle trips a day. Those roads were based on the West Albert County Transportation Master Plan, which was designed to address the growth we are experiencing today. The only development specifically mentioned in that master plan was Spring Valley Ranch. The traffic analysis shows 178 will have more cars just about on day one than Delbert has now. This traffic is going to grow, and you're going to end up with 7,800 cars on a, being dumped into the two-lane Delbert Road. CR 178 by the traffic, by the regulations for the county, probably should be a four-lane road. The analysis shows that the intersection of 178 and Delbert is a level of service D to F. When I was in school, that was a failing grade. This is two levels below what the Department of Transportation recommends for rural roads. It results in unstable flow and a high probability of accidents, and that's based on the highway capacity manual. This would be yellow or red if it were included in the master plan, why CR 182 was green or B in all the analyses I've seen. This is why we feel this is an unsafe road. I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm not a planner, but I've been an engineer for 40 years. I taught engineering for five years. I taught engineering for the various PE exams for eight years. None of my students would try to push three pipes of flow into one smaller pipe with a restriction on the end. That pipe won't flush. I ask that you do your jobs and flush this proposal.
Name is Scott Marks. Address is 371 Lutzken Court over in Parker. So after, it's been a few years now that we've been discussing this 178, 182 issue, and there are still some questions that have been completely unanswered by the commissioners about this decision. So initially, when we asked Grant Thayer, why 178 as opposed to 182, the only answer we could get from him was, it's not fair to the developer. So I asked him, why are you so concerned about what's fair to the developer? Why aren't you concerned about what's fair to the residents? All we heard was crickets, nothing, complete silence, and he turned and walked away. And then later, we also asked him, why don't we do an objective, public, side-by-side comparison of the advantages and disadvantages of 182 and 178? He refused to do that. He just stared straight ahead, and he wouldn't answer our questions. And so he always says he's an engineer, so we're all pretty familiar about that, and he frequently tells us that, and so he's used to performing an objective data analysis, but yet he refuses to do a side-by-side comparison of 182 and 178. The only reasonable conclusion from that is he knows that side-by-side 182 is going to be the logical choice. So if we just talk about the pros and cons of 182 and 178, when we look at 182, it's a natural, logical place to go. It ties directly into the major intersection on Delbert Road, East Parker Road, and it's a main corridor going into Parker. It's much safer due to greater visibility, and it's going to have a smoother traffic flow. If we look at 178, there really are no pros if we go ahead and compare it to 182. What it's going to do is increase congestion because it's going to have an additional intersection on that road. But then the other thing is when we look at the, it as being a hilltop intersection, it has very poor visibility from the north. So I went out there and took a laser rangefinder and looked at from the crest of that hill where we can, to where we can see the intersection. It's 91 meters. That's four seconds of travel. And if we look at the traffic guides, it consistently says in order for someone that's driving to react, it takes two and a half seconds in order to recognize the issue and react, and then after that two and a half seconds, then they have to brake. So this person coming over this intersection is going to, they're going to have one and a half seconds of wiggle room before they end up hitting a car in front of them if they weren't paying attention. Another thing is back in, two years ago, I sat in a, in a meeting with CDOT and the Board of County Commissioners in a courthouse, and Grant Thayer was talking about County Road, the intersection of County Road 17 and 86, which is a similar hilltop intersection. At least three times, he spoke to the CDOT representatives and said, this is a dangerous intersection. When are you going to fix this? So I went out there and took the laser rangefinder and looked. The distance from there, from the crest of the intersection, is 174 meters, twice the distance of the one at, on a proposed intersection at County Road 178. So Grant Thayer considered that as being a dangerous intersection, but the site distance was twice as long as 91, but yet he wants, wishes to propose to put in 91, so it's a known dangerous intersection. Why would we do this? So the question is, the bottom line is, why does the, why does the Board of County Commissioners refuse to do an objective comparison between 182 and 178? Why would they choose an intersection which is known to be dangerous and would increase serious injuries and death and also increase traffic congestions? So I guess my bottom line is, why don't we answer these questions?
Hey Danny? Danny? Your computer's talking to you here.
There you go.
All right. Chris Hatton, 1483 Carlson Road. Thank you. I was, we were hoping to get 10 minutes to speak, and Christina said, you know, prepare for three or 10, so. Let's see posters around here that are actually presenting all of our arguments here, so after you're done, take a look at them. All right. Is that better? All right. Anyway, if you look around the room, we've got posters kind of outlining our discussion points. I was going to talk about, I'd like to start about drainage, and one of the concerns that we've got with the proposed County Road 178 was drainage, and we had quite a bit of discussion. And today, we actually had a watershed moment. We had an opportunity to meet with, with the county, with the engineers within the county. And it was very collaborative. It was very productive for most of the, most of the meeting. And kudos to everybody for, the engineers for participating in that. There's an opportunity here for us to have a voice that's heard. Our voice hasn't been heard for the last three years, and that's what we're asking for is a voice. So basically, what we're asking you to do, to reject this, we get an opportunity to go through our concerns. A specific concern that I have is, and you'll see here, is as the road joins the properties to the south, it creates an embankment, or not really a dam, but it is a dam with a pipe conduit going through the middle of it. And you'll see a section line here. Those embankments- Those embankments typically butt right against that section line are very close. What happens in, what we looked at at the hydrology and the drainage is that as those pipes fill and flow for the design flow, they actually build up a water pressure behind them, which is called head. And they'll pond water behind there. What they're doing is they're ponding water onto the adjoining land. Okay? Which is not allowed. And if you go through the regulations and you look at the designs, the design should include the blockage of the pipes and that sort of thing, which we don't believe that they've included. But we can go through and take a look at. But what they're doing is they're ponding water and they're raising the surface water elevation on the adjoining lands. If you look at these posters here, the yellow right there actually shows the areas that are inundated. And some of those areas, we actually have a very good survey on first. And so by ponding water on the adjoining land, that's considered a taking. And it's either considered trespass or reverse or inverse condemnation, which is not allowed. And if you look at, your job obviously is to go through the approval. You have boxes that you check, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one. If you look at the drainage plans and the requirements of Section six hundred of the design standard and also the zoning regulations, which would be Amendment three C, you're not in compliance with either one of those. You're impacting the adjoining lands. And so for that reason, specific to this issue, we're saying, go ahead, reject the proposal. This is just a proposal by Mr. Marshall. Go ahead and reject that. Give us an opportunity to work with the engineers and talk through some of these issues. Thank you.
Can I get clarification on who just spoke? This is Justin.
What'd you say, Justin?
I'm just looking for clarification on who just spoke.
Gentleman's name is Chris Hatton.
No other information? I didn't hear an address? I didn't hear anything?
Carlson Road.
That was fourteen eighty-three Carlson Road.
My name is John Smith. I live at four three seven six six Puckston Road. For those of you who do not know me, I'm a licensed professional engineer with a master's in science degree in electrical engineering, a second master's of science degree in biomechanics. I held a degree in engineering from the Colorado School of Mines. I spent over thirty years in the US Army Corps of Engineers. I held every engineering classification, including those of civil engineering, facility engineering, topographic engineering, and combat engineering. I've done construction throughout the United States and the law of the world, including building roads. As just one example, when I was an engineer battalion commander in Baghdad, we had to repair the highway that ran in front of our Ford operating base. Now their highways are built to the same standards as ours. So we had to bring it up to that standard. So that's an example we would do. In my civilian career, I've analyzed over thirty-five hundred motor vehicle collisions to understand why they occur. This includes everything from evaluating roadway designs throughout the United States. I've been recognized as an expert in the fields of accident reconstruction and biomechanics in at least twenty-nine states, numerous federal courts, and virtually every district court in Colorado. It is my professional opinion that County Road one seventy-eight is a clear and present danger to the citizens of Douglas and Elbert County. I came in here prepared to provide detailed examples from Douglas County and other sources. This is why the road was unsafe. Then I was going to explain how there have been at least five traffic studies, of which you heard, most of which are contradictory and some are clearly in error. First I was going to show you how the left turn lane proposed was going to get people killed. How the lines of sight were insufficient and how an acceleration lane would have to be there to make the road have any chance for safety. I believe I was going to prove to you the road was unsafe. Then today, something happened. Four engineers who are citizens of Elbert County, sorry with that, with a combined experience of over one hundred and fifty years, sat down with Mr. Hale, Mr. O'Hern, and other engineers. As a group, we agreed that our primary concern was the safety of the citizens in Elbert County. What is best for our county? They acknowledged our concerns and agreed that the safety aspects were not something they had evaluated. They agreed they had not performed a comparative analysis between CR one seventy-eight, CR one eighty-two, or any of the other roads Mr. Marshall was asked to be relieved from. This is not a criticism of them. I am not faulting them for that. This is merely how the process works. Mr. Marshall comes to the county with a wish list. The county evaluates what he has proposed. And that gives to the planning commission for you guys to decide what is best for our county. You don't have to recommend approval. There's no requirement to do that because this is merely a negotiation between Jim Marshall and Jim Marshall. However, that is not the end of the story. Mr. O'Hern and Mr. Hale suggested a series of meetings between the citizens' engineers, the county, and Mr. Marshall's engineers. We have agreed. Since the citizens have other jobs, we discussed the tentative schedule. This will take a little bit of time to go through everything. So now let me address the issues I have mentioned, but the other issues you're going to hear today. Jim Marshall was directly asked, would you be willing to postpone tonight's meeting, tonight's hearing, so that we could have the time to actually address all the issues and determine what is best for our county? His answer was no. Therefore, members of the planning commission, I'm asking you to reject, recommend rejection of this application. And let us work with the county and the other engineers to determine and reach the best solution for all of us. Now, an obvious question is, why did we wait till today to meet with the county? We did not wait till today. We've been trying to get a meeting with the county for some time. And we were told by the county engineer, sorry, the county attorney, that that was not allowed because of ex parte. Turns out that's not true, but that is why we were told. That's why it took till today. And the county actually reached out to us, which we do appreciate. When we're all done here, Jim Marshall's going to stand up. And he's going to tell you other things and try to refute what we've told you today. In his presentation, I counted no less than twenty-five misstatements. Things either were not true or weren't quite exactly representative of the reality of it. Jim Marshall is not an engineer. So what I recommend is that you give us the time. Give us the time to do this right for the county. Do not accept Mr. Marshall's first offer. This is merely his start of negotiation. Let us work together with the county to do what is best. I have all the background data here if anybody needs to see it. Thank you.
All right. So my name is Kellen Johnson. I live in Spring Valley Ranch. It's my understanding that the developer is still under obligation from DGA one to design and install a dual reuse water irrigation system to each lot in the development. DGA one was agreed upon seventeen years ago, and there does not appear to be a dual reuse water system installed to each lot. The language in DGA three appears to relieve the developer of this obligation by saying it is essentially an alternative means of water conservation secondary to water restrictions implemented by the district which he controls. If the developer has had seventeen years to install the water reuse system to each lot there, and he hasn't done it, why would he install it now if it becomes an alternative means of water conservation? If the developer is relieved of this obligation, not only would this let him off his end of the deal when he has already gained the advantage of hundreds of additional houses on top of what was agreed to in DGA one, but we as Spring Valley Ranch residents will continue to pay the developer the same amount for faucet water as we worked for the water for our grass. In addition, without a water reuse system, the water aquifer that is a critical and finite resource to this region will continue to take an irreversible pit. And it's only going to get worse as more and more developments move into this area, which is happening more rapidly every year. DGA three should not be approved as it is currently written. The poster for this info is here. Words in the back to the left of the door. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Wayne Ordakowski, nine ten Newman Drive, Park Prime Estates, up the singing hills. DGA three is about a developer that wants to be relieved of his contractual obligations to the county, thereby enriching himself between fifteen and thirty million dollars. In two thousand and three, DGA two, the developer agreed to build a water reuse system for five hundred eight homes. Seventeen years later, with no construction effort made towards that commitment, the developer has now proposed DGA three, which relieves him of the responsibility and cost to construct a buried water system. DGA three impacts the aquifer that everyone in northwestern Elbert County uses. In other words, you're destroying your water supply and increasing the cost. Doesn't make sense. No water reuse system and no houses. DGA three caps the impact fees. Impact fees are much lower than the industry standard. By about half is documented in a report commissioned by the county by a company called Raftellus. We also know in Independence, it's about five thousand dollars a home. Why are these half? At a million dollars, well, the DGA three, the County Road one seventy-eight shortcut does include seven point one five miles of pavement. The developer does not tell you, well, he has, that DGA three relieves him of nearly ten miles of road that he was obligated to construct dating back to early two thousand. At a million dollars a mile, it shortens the citizens of Elbert County, but saves him over ten million dollars. If the developer does not want to build the roads he's currently obligated to build, then he can give back the houses. Simple. Less pavement, less pavement equals less homes. The developer was required to build roads years ago and elected not to. There is a requirement for significant road construction after the four hundred building permit. He's blown by that by forty-three houses and counting. Elbert County Commissioners must hold him in that contractual obligation. The roads that he has constructed in Spring Valley Ranch are a mess. There's a couple pictures from one of the posts here. Look no further than to ask any of the people in Spring Valley Ranch about the condition of their roads that this developer built. The County Road one seventy-eight shortcut is not the safest road. The County Road one seventy-eight shortcut that DGA three proposes has an intersection at Delbert that you, your family, your teenage driver and a busload of kids will be using every day. It will be undersized, have no acceleration lane, have a four-foot shoulder dropping into the deep ditch. Something to look forward to for the dead of winter. As you or your teenager kids turn onto the shortcut, traffic will be bearing down and you at an average of about fifty-one point eight miles an hour. Some will not even see you as you turn east. County Road one seventy-eight shortcut is not the safest road and the developer knows it. Is this really what you want for your family, for the citizens of Elbert County? The Elbert County Planning Commission should reject this DGA three proposal. Elbert County citizens deserve the original agreement. Thank you.
I'm Kayle Forington. Live at five three six Meadow Station Circle. All right. So I've lived in Elbert County thirty-nine years. The direction of the leadership has changed drastically in the last twenty years. It does not work for the people, but for the developers. And just to share a little bit of history, why there's so much frustration here with this developer. In two thousand and eight, hundreds of Elbert County citizens formed a coalition to fight a bad decision the county commissioners made regarding Spring Valley Vista. This allowed developers to reduce our water rules from a three-hundred-year life to a hundred, all to benefit them. The elected officials voted to give away our precious water resources. A small group of citizens had no choice but to sue Elbert County on behalf of all the citizens' interests and they won. Unfortunately, no accountability was put on the commissioners. All the financial burden was placed on the citizens. Again, in two thousand and eighteen, the same developer came forward with another proposal, DGA three. This amendment would eliminate his contractual obligations of sixteen miles of roads and a water reuse system plus give back to the developer approximately ten million dollars. He chose to create a new roadway called one seventy-eight instead of the safer one eighty-two. No notice was given to those residents most hurt by this proposal, i.e. Meadow Station and Carlson Ranch. These are the same individuals involved in the first lawsuit. Coincidence? I don't think so. Another lawsuit was filed and won by the citizens. This time, the judge ruled the county overreached their authority. You have professionals coming before you at no cost to the county, telling you straight up that Mr. Marshall's figures are wrong and his maps are deceiving. If you look at one of the exhibits up here in the front, this is a map, the map that he submitted is quite different than the one he distributed at a community meeting on October twenty-second, which misleads where the actual road connects with Delbert. By the way, where were the county officials at that meeting? Where are the minutes to that community meeting? According to your own application process, they're required to be included in a packet. They are not, which makes the packet incomplete and therefore void for further discussions. You don't have all the information you need. And CDS, once again, unfortunately, has failed to do their job. The other exhibit is an email from our county attorney Bart Greer, colluding with Mr. Marshall on the best way to present his proposal to mislead the citizens of the county. Do you do diligence like we have? Please read the history of Spring Valley Ranch, the DGAs, and his contractual obligations. You say Elbert County needs more roads? Then why in the world would you give back sixteen miles of roads for only three miles? Plus, let him pocket ten million dollars that could be in ours. Make him do what he's contracted to do for the safety of Elbert County citizens. Thank you.
Hello. Tom Sokia. I'm at three two three Meadow Station Circle. My request is Elbert County Planning My request to Elbert County Planning Commission is that you reject Spring Valley Ranch Design Guide Agreement 3 proposal. The developer is proposing a reduction in road obligations from 16 miles of roads in existing SVR DGA 2 to seven miles of roads in DGA 3. This reduction in road obligations benefits one entity, the developer, and only the developer. Estimated savings to the developer is in excess of 10 million dollars. There is no benefit to Elbert County in reducing the road paving obligations from 16 miles to seven miles. The current existing and legally binding road obligations as documented in Spring Valley Ranch DGA 2 are based in part on housing density bonuses provided to the developer and the SVR development from an original 678 to the current 1786. So we've traded housing bonuses for additional roads that we want to step away from them. I'd like to hear a quote from Jim Marshall during that informational community meeting on October 22nd, and I quote, "If the third amendment to the Development Guide Agreement doesn't get approved, we'd be obligated to pave 1721, 186, 182, and which we are not going to do," end quote. And I repeat, he said, "We are not going to do it." It's a statement of fact in his mind. The current Spring Valley Ranch DGA 2 road obligations provide for constructions and paving portions of 1721, 186, 194, 13, and 182. This provides three road corridors to and from Spring Valley Ranch. These existing 16 miles of road obligations are legal obligations that the developer is attempting to relieve himself of. The developer in DGA 3 is requesting 16 miles of road obligations be eliminated in exchange for a single Spring Valley corridor via proposed Road 178. The developer has claims that the SVR DGA 2 road obligations are based on Spring Valley Ranch as well as the defunct Spring Valley Vista. There is no formal documentation that I could find or any of my other people working on this supporting this purported dependency between Spring Valley Vista, Spring Valley Ranch, DGA 2, and the current road obligations. An additional quote from Jim Marshall during that same October 2020 meeting, quote, "A municipality has an obligation to meet the health, safety, and welfare of all of its residents, not five, and they need to build roads." And I repeat, he said, "They need to build roads." There hasn't been a new road built here in Elbert County probably for 20 to 25 years that I can think of, end quote. I find these quotes and the developer's words contradictory. He says he will not meet his current road obligations at 16 miles, yet he preaches the county needs roads and he proposes a seven-mile road alternative. I request that the planning commission reject SVR DGA 3 and if the planning commission votes to approve, then I request that the planning commission provides a public summary, preferably in writing, enlightening and educating citizens of Elbert County as to how this is more advantageous, DGA 3 with seven miles versus 16 miles in SVR DGA 2. It's interesting, but at the opening, in Christina's summary, she noted, and the word kept appearing, delete road, delete road, delete road, delete road, delete road. I think it happened six times, that didn't count. It's funny, I didn't hear, delete the 900 home bonuses. That's all, thank you.
Yeah, we, it's Jordan Wong. Jordan Wong, 45388 Cole Creek Road, 45390 Cole Creek Road, 2272 Pronghorn Circle, Lot 83 Pronghorn Estates, and 45590 Cole Creek Drive. I don't have a big speech prepared like all them over there. We have been going to the meetings, listening to the county, listening to the developers. We believe in the current maps on DGA 3, the 178 road appears to be an easier, faster route for the Spring Valley Ranch citizens to go back and forth. Being that there's already a north-south corridor, seems logical. Saves the county money in maintenance in the long term. Just between, how many roads does the county have, 1,500 miles roughly? And 1,100 miles of dirt road? Each grader operators on the hook for roughly 80 hours of work a week, plus or minus.